These bike lanes, as you mentioned, it isn't just the old fashioned bikes. Electric bikes that can go thirty, forty miles an hour. They select your scooter there. Sometimes motorcycles are going on the bike lanes as well. So they can jam through and rope the red lines. So I think it's about enforcement of the existing laws we have. Maybe you start doing them in the city as well. Your closing statement? So again, I want to thank you very much. What I see is struggle during an event of a big picture that we're seeing in New York City and a lot of other places is not your traditional Democrat versus Republican, or even liberal versus conservative. What we're really seeing in the city, and it comes really to the forefront in the last few days because of the international news, it's really a struggle between socialists, who are increasingly taking over more and more of the institutions of the Democratic Party, and really the rest of us, common sense people. And I'm talking about Republicans, Conservatives, Independents, and increasingly disaffected Democrats, who have seen their party being hijacked by socialists such as my opponent, Alisa Abad. Who are more concerned about this particular worldview and ideology that they have than they are about their daily problems that we need to be solving, such as crime, education, quality of life. And then you think it's your small base disorders from homeowners as well. So I thank you for your time. And I can sit up here and give great speeches. A lot of people can say many wonderful things. But at the end of the day, it's all up to you. November seventh, it's an off-year election because there's no governor, no mayor, no president being elected. It's just sort of districting year, so it's already a regular election. But we have a really good chance of making some real changes. So you need to get up, you need to get your friends out, you need to get the word out that November seventh is the end of the day that you're just gonna say forget about. We need to go beyond that ten, fifteen percent voter turnout. So if you want some real change, you either vote R or C, Republican, Conservative, this is what we said. Thank you, Mr. Trump. So before we introduce our next candidate, I do want to recognize our several member, Esther Chang. And by the way, we had a few other prominent guests here tonight. I know where New York Conservative Party Chair Jerry Bissar was here, and Richard Barcenian, a Republican chair, and your friend Peter Reva, he was here from the Assembly Number. So let me tell you, so the district, the next district we're gonna talk about, we're gonna be removing here tomorrow, is District Forty-seven. District Forty-seven covers Black Heights, Bay Ridge, Coney Island, Manhattan Beach, and Seagate. It's a, I guess, a really redraw district. And we have, so we invited City Council Justin Brennan, who's running on Democratic Party line. Mr. Brennan was invited to participate but did not respond to our request. City Council Member Artie Kayden is running on Republican Conservative line. Mr. Kayden immigrated to the United States with his family from La Russa in nineteen ninety-three. He's been at uni and graduated from Purdue College. For twenty-one years, Mr. Kayden hosted a radio show reporting on immigrant rights. He is the son of Holocaust survivors and previously worked with Congress Member Michael McMahon and Comptroller John Loops, Scott Strader, and Council Member Mark Traynor. Mr. Gass, and Council Member. Mr. Kayden, would you like your opening statements? So just you are here, so the opening statements are for a while? Oh, that's very funny. You can put ahead, I'll ask some questions. You can do a closing statement. Happy opening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilman Artie Kayden. Twenty percent of Americans with no English, no money, just a lot of hopes and dreams. And now I live my American dream. And I'm New York City Councilman. And it is a very big honor for me. And I'm very, very grateful to this beautiful country for giving this opportunity. I host town halls in every neighborhood of my district. Currently, my Forty-seventh District is deeper. But I was asked to be able, I will start this, if I will win, with God's help, with your help, on November seventh, I will start this transition of hosting town halls in every neighborhood, including verified Bay Ridge, West Ridge. Because the first part is to listen, to listen, to go. I don't know anything. I like to hear what you have to offer. So I believe it's very important. Today in the morning, I was on a podcast, this very progressive commentator, Renatz. He interviewed me and Justin Brennan. I knew that moderator is very, very progressive. I said yes, and I agreed to debate. Doesn't matter whether it's a conservative commentator or progressive commentator. No, you have to be ready to go everywhere and to debate everybody. Otherwise, get out of the kitchen, you know? If you cannot take the heat, get out of the kitchen. Some of you already met me at parades in Bay Ridge. In fact, I'd like not to miss a single parade, a single festival, a single black party. I've already visited several black parties in Bay Ridge. And that's of course on top of knocking doors, whether it's a dome building or a private house, because it's very good and pushing weight and it's very healthy. Also, I see voters, I talk to voters. I see, I hear, and it's very, very important. And that's outside of my garbage office in New York City Council, which is also very, very demanding. So I just came here from Marlborough Houses meeting, monthly meeting of the parent associations. When it was the district in Saka, I presented such a combination of Black Heights and Marlborough Houses in the same district. Not because I'm afraid of them. My work houses are all protected by them. In fact, I am ready to go anywhere. You already said that I worked for Staten Island Congress at some point in my life for two years. Without him, God, I worked for the United States Congressman who represented Staten Island. And I went bypass to Staten Island. And I used Staten Island railroad. So I'm not afraid to go anywhere all over the world if it's important for our community, if it's necessary to deliver for our communities. The message I convey is the leader results for social program. And this is what I'm aiming to. I'm not afraid of Mayor, Governor, President, Speaker. In fact, many of you know that I was a Democrat. And then last year, when I was a member of Democratic Conference, I still remember how O B T N A came to us, talked to us, how much money we have to spend. But I'm letting you, it's not my money. It's your money, the express money. So. And after everybody said, three million here, ten million here, fifty million there, one million over there, I raised my hand and was busting out. And Democratic Conference, I said, hey, each one of you cannot be so unsimple proposal. How to save express money? What to do, where can we see some blood, government, face, road abuse? Please, let's cut. It was like, all of this money, someone will save express money. And the oldest thought I got from some of my colleagues, you sounded like a Republican, guess what? I am a Republican. I'm riding as a proud Republican. In June, this girl had, the name of your neighbors, I received more than seventy-five percent of Republican votes in three-way rallies, and I'm very proud of it. And now I'm facing a world who is confident that magic of the letter D is the only magic that wasn't in Brooklyn and anywhere else. But already last year, Democrats, not just the Republicans, not just the Democrats, but Democrats in Brooklyn, proof that magic of letter D doesn't work anymore. And the life proof is in this room right now. Assemblyman Liston Chou. Assemblyman Mike T. Gaste. Assemblyman Michael Navak. All of them born in overwhelming Democratic districts. Democrats are always kidnapped. Because everybody, I said today in the morning, I said, like, this, why didn't you speak? Because of that, because of them, I said, every time my nineteen-year-old daughter leaving my apartment and going outside, I'm very, very, very nervous. I text her, I texted your mother, you said, nice. Where are you? Everything is okay? Then people said, like, you know, such controlling father, because I'm really afraid for her safety in the current New York City climate. Well, everybody's saying, oh, we have less criminals, less shootings. And like, everything is going down, crime is down, we are all safe. But you know what? You can't say this once, second time. It doesn't mean anything, you know? I'm riding trains every day. I'm riding public transportation every day. I walk in streets, I walk a lot. I change my shoes like every two weeks because I walk a lot. It's also good to see what's going on around. So people do not feel safe at all. When you go into a pharmacy and you see two space being locked, because they're afraid that someone will come, will break everything, will take everything and get it away. When I came to see the second prison, police muscle, and police prison, and I see pictures, photos of every criminal, mass delinquency on the press beach, and I said, why don't you listen? Why don't we put them to jail? We know what they have done. No council, it's a progress exercise. We put only pictures of people who are released more than maybe more than twenty times. If they're released more than twenty times, that's the pictures you can see. Doesn't matter how many times you're arrested, they will be released the next morning. And then they're asking me, why do you believe Democratic Party? Because, I said, they're doing this mass to feel less safe and final and also just open safe. My honor, proud of this year. Forget the wrong religious votes, the ones that get my PD, diafragma, etc. But even this year, it was a pure and simple hope about public safety to create a civilian committee and to spend twenty-seven million dollars to review all cases of all inmates of Rogers Island and to release conditionally safely, safely to the street, twenty-seven hundred of them. Why such a number? Because right now in Rogers Island, sixty-two hundred inmates, sixty-two hundred. And they're going to close records and total four border-based jails, capacity target five hundred. So if you have proof with mess, the difference is twenty-seven hundred. They need to release them to the street. And then, everything will be beautiful, nothing will happen. Again, I have a nineteen-year-old daughter. How would she feel if she will face a lot of these beautiful people who told me Rogers Island, when I visited, I don't know if I do it here, my institutional rights, please release me from here? And then I checked his chap, chapter, you know, folder, you know? Two slashes outside of the jail and two slashes to where he was in jail. Four slashes. Should we release this person tomorrow to the, safely to the street?
No.
He's gonna do two more slashes and then go. So I cannot agree, cannot disagree more. I voted against the creation of this committee and then I voted against twenty-seven million dollars to help this committee. And Brennan voted twice, yes, and he's very proud of his work. He told me, oh, you want to put everybody to jail. So that was my opening statement.
Let's start with that. Because one question, I'm willing to elaborate. You have strong wish to support the NYPD and FDMI in helping stem the current surge of crime problem. And you have taken issue with your opponent for not strongly supporting the NYPD and being lax on crime, I believe that's what you said. How would you help remedy the situation, Colleen?
Thank you, very good question. First of all, I'm very, very proud to be endorsed by major police unions. And we still hoping for one more. It wasn't not by four, but there are five police unions. I'm still hoping that they don't do the racism and will endorse me. Because there is no choice for them in this election. It should be one of your choices. So we can do a lot. Some people say, oh, minority, doesn't matter. Minority in City Council have no voice. That is absolutely not true. First of all, it is quite a loud voice. And the more the mayor, the more members, the more louder the voice also. It's a common sense caucus. So it's a six Republicans and two conservative Democrats. That's already eight people out of fifty-one. We already succeeded several times. Maybe you remember last December, New York City Council voted to pass a legislation to cancel any background checks for prospective candidates. So you cannot check their criminal history. It wasn't committed any violent crimes. It wasn't committed any crime. You cannot check their criminal history. That was the essence of legislation. They called it give a second chance, something like this. Two, one was answers out of fifty-one. Meaning what six Republicans, two conservatives, the Democrats can do? I can tell you what we did. First, we posted letters, up ads, press conferences, rallies on the steps of city halls. That was a public hearing or public safety committee. We brought tons of witnesses. Tons of people came as homeowners, residents, president of parent associations, co-adjunct presidents. Everybody testified against it. And then it was a huge scandal when one guy came in favor of this legislation. He was a convicted rapist. He raped twelve-year-old young. He spent some serious time in jail. He didn't want anybody to know about him. So of course he voted this second chance legislation so nobody would know about him and to leave wherever he was. Long story short, this legislation is not a locker on a table. Nobody's ever talking about it anymore. Meaning loud voice protest, press conferences, public hearings, public embarrassments, nobody wants public embarrassments. Including my opponent, a retired pusher. About why, why, because some kind of nonsense rallied in Bay Ridge, about my chapters. And then I said, but you just said that it's a serious issue. So you're in support of it? No, no, I'm not in support of it. That like, it's a good idea to post a public rally vote. So that's why it is possible to oppose some nonsense, to oppose some destructive legislation, to vote against, to talk about it. And sometimes we are trying to, sometimes we're successful to start to train. Also, a council member allocated funding to police prisons, which is very important. For new patrol cars, it's helpful. For new security cameras, it's helpful for public safety. Some other measures, I have like some major developments. And they have some called security cameras. I started to check, have for them to not work. So I called security company of my channel for them to check all of his cameras. All of them are working, both in Coney Island and Marlborough. So as council member, I do have some power in terms of fighting, in terms of opposing stupid, vicious counterproductive legislation. Public is supporting NYPD and law enforcement. And to make sure communities are safe. Also, it's important, I believe, to visit every prison council. And I visited every, every single police prison in my district. Road calls, you know, they do it at seven o'clock. When are you gonna come? Well, they come at seven, it's early. Eleven P M, it's too late, so no, no. I want to come at seven, at three, at eleven. I came at every police prison in my district, last year and this year, at every shift, at every road call. Because I wanted to say to this police officers, who could be in the next minute, where is you? We support you, we got our back. So it's important, it's necessary.
Thank you. And let's elaborate on another one. So the Democratic Chair, Ramiis Ashad, she's recently, I think, scared to people in this community in particular. She said she was, you know, she proposed to have the opening of migrant shelter. She was in Fort Halleton. And there's, you know, the army base and you wouldn't even talk about it, I'm not sure. Or, what do you, I think I know what you're saying, but how do you, how do we not allow, allow this to happen to close to our schools and close to our communities where it may be, you know, disruptive?
Thank you, very good question. The first problem is respect for the community. Notification of the community. I know that Mayor doesn't want you to know whether any migrant shelter or homeless shelter or any type of problematic situation in your area, he doesn't want you to know about it upfront. But, you know, like, whether it's convenient or inconvenient, you have to notify elected officials, community board. In case of Coney Island, it was like school principal, parents. I learned about migrants being located in the school gym in Coney Island, not from Mayor's office, not from City Hall, not from the Office of Emergency Management, from Concerned Parents of Coney Island. And then I was told this, it's temporary. They even invented the term Temporary Processing Center, not shelter. Center, Temporary Processing Center. And I asked them, how long is the temporary? Eh, maybe two, three weeks, you know? And what will happen next? There'll be new migrants. This one will leave, we will present, there will be new ones. Do you know how long they can be in this gym for one night? Because for units in Coney Island, it's a day of life. The next day, we hosted a huge rally of parents, with children, whether it's children, parents, and grandparents, and neighbors came. It was a huge rally protest. It was a lot of TV cameras, and Fox News, and CNN. And you're not long story short. The next day, three buses, four buses came and took eighty-three migrants to Roosevelt Hotel. The point is, they have to understand that we need to be generous. It should be respectful of the community. And I was told, oh, why do you, my point will be dim and low because I'm doing preemptive in Bay Ridge, preemptive in here for having them militarily faced? Oh, it's not happening here. But you know, as long as it's happening, it will be too late, very late. No, we don't have to say now. No migrant shelters in Bay Ridge, no migrant shelters in the Democrats. No migrant shelters anywhere in South New York. There is a point about compassion. Like, every time I hear it, from Mayor, from Justin Brennan, from some others, you're not compassionate. You're ignorant yourself. How could you do it? You can't be so ready to just start us. There are asylum seekers for rent alive. You have no help. For example, I volunteer for many homeless shelters over there. Volunteer. Before I was elected anywhere, I volunteer for tenant for migrant organizations, for people with disabilities, for seniors, for organizations that serve families with children. And I volunteered last year in the Superstore Center and during the pandemic and so on. But I came to America legally. I wasn't reviewed, I was vetted. I went over ground checks. They took blood tests, checked whether I had AIDS or two precursors. And when I go for county congressional office, many, many times immigration authorities did not allow people to come to America if they had AIDS, if they had some criminal background, if they had some problems, some issues. Right now, we have open borders policy. No questions asked, not on the border, not in New York City. Anybody can come, just play. I'm asylum seeker from Venezuela. And could you show documents, no documents? I'm just saying I'm from Venezuela. Why are you from Venezuela? Because I have just advanced TPS status. Nobody, nobody, you're a asylum from Venezuela. How could you move? I don't have documents, I can't sign a document. So a lot of documents are illegal for the world. Long story short, we need to protest now, not to eliminate the hackers, to show that we do not take lightly. This is very serious issue. And we do not agree. We will let you send the message. They already know. We strongly disagree. And the amount of respect is the illegal right to do something like this. They already know. Now they are coming here. They know that this community will not tolerate such disrespect. Notification afterwards, no, no, beforehand. And again, I was asked today and before, but what are you offering, you can just complain with? You do not offer the solution. Where are you supposed to build these migrant shelters? Or you want to put them on the sidewalks? That's not what I'm saying. There are several rules in New York City that were installed long ago for homeless New Yorkers, including right-to-shelter, like for ninety days. Including sanctuary city was proposed first time by Rudy Giuliani for a very similar reason. He wanted undocumented immigrants to show up in courts to inform police about violent crimes and that their children will be vaccinated before going to school. That was the only reason why he made, he approved these rules. But he never imagined, and nobody imagined, that it will be like hundreds of thousands of people who will come with no documents, no getting, no change of anything. And they have to be ninety days guaranteed shelter, food, mopeds, cell phones, and so on, and no questions asked. So that's why I say we have to definitely, definitely change right-to-shelter rules. We need to suspend sanctuary city status. We need to call up President to secure our borders. And we need to bring more and more incentives. My brother is doing this. This year, he voted for pilot cash welfare program. This year, he voted for pilot cash welfare program to incentivize even more people not to work and to come to New York City. We have plenty of cash. But I voted against it, I spoke against it. I said, why do we need, we have already welfare program. Why do we need another pilot cash welfare pants? Why? And basically, whose money is this? The express money, not his money. He's not afraid of his house to give out his cash welfare pants. So why he saved our public, third money to spend on, I saw programs that creates world dependency, instead of creating jobs?
So I'm gonna ask you this too, because it's a topic that's impacting our pretty much a lot. Great, great area, great parts of Brooklyn. Thinking like, oh, pets, the people riding recklessly on sidewalks and adding here to the roads, to the road, and getting, you know, in very close proximity to the bus stop. What do you, what do you stand, and what do we do?
Thank you. Right now, in City Council, there is a bill already cosponsored by a worth of twenty people. It's still not enough, we need twenty-six to press any legislation. But it's already going in the right direction. Brian Cospans, the Councilman Van Holbein. He's a conservative Democrat, co-chair of Common Sense Caucus. He endorsed me in this election. And he proposed a legislation that every E-bike in New York City should have a registration number, should have insurance, should be accountable. So if there are two things that you just described, they have to be, they have to be accountable. We have to know to you, what is the number, who is paying for this insurance? Then it will be much more responsible behavior, you know? Now, one rule in New York City, anything goes, no rules. One rule, no rules. That shouldn't be like this. I said, I never said not for chaos, you know? When I came to America, the first seat I saw was near Miami, Manhattan. Near Rector Street, I saw several homeless sleeping on benches in May of nineteen ninety-three, and that's for a month or so. But America is such a rich country, why so many homeless? And everybody told me, forget it, it's gonna be always like this. And you know, I lived in New York City when Mayor of New York City was Rudy Giuliani. And I saw the difference what happened to Times Square, what happened to homeless, what happened to welfare crisis, etc. So it's all about leadership. It's all about who are our leaders. So I'm cospans of this key bicycle registration and insurance legislation. About bicycles, it's basically, you cannot touch bicycles. And today, just as well, bikes, you cannot touch. Touch anything, we got bikes, that's like crazy. We have to unlock only drivers. We need to do congestion pricing, as much as possible. He won't let you, he won't let you. And also, expensive cars. I'm talking against congestion pricing. I'm talking against new taxes on fee. Or anything like tires, you know? We discussed in City Council, tires on electricity in Puerto Rico. And if I ask question, why are we discussing for so long expensive rates for electricity in Puerto Rico? And why don't we discuss how to break cannabis monopoly in New York or in your region, in Puerto Rico? I said, what? This is a question that concerns my constituents. I was led to the Brooklyn, and people pay so much for electricity sometimes, the rate increases like five hundred percent with no questions asked, why? Oh, that's questions, that's it, you know? Everyone's exempt into Brooklyn, tech high school, math, English, logic, it's a racist as well. Question about the electricity rates, when they have nothing to say, don't rely on services. You ask too many questions, you know? I do continue to advocate for my community.
One more question, and proportionate goes in power. So, Mr. Kayden, what do you say to people who say, well, you know, Artie Kayden knows Coney Island, CK, and New York Public, you know, in these, you know, the Black Heights, Bay Ridge? you know, he knows Dakar Heights and Bay Ridge? What would you say? What are the common issues that you can say, well, you know, it doesn't matter, it's all the same, because they were facing the same issues? But can you draw?
Thank you, very good question. Yes, it does give a reach, and I live in Creighton.